Oh, did, is there an agenda for this meeting? But Gary, no.
Yes.
What, is it an echo or something?
Did you get it?
Oh.
Did you hear an echo?
No.
Yeah, I heard it.
Did you hear it?
Some, somebody, something over there said this meeting's being recorded. Somebody or something.
I'm just gonna get an agenda.
Are you ready, Hector?
I'm ready, Mayor.
I'll wait for Councilor Panemirov. Okay, it is six forty-nine and we will call the Talent City Council meeting of June sixth to order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Coley.
Here.
Councilor Panemirov.
Here.
Councilor Prestizo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Para Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayersblood.
Here.
Mayor, if you have a form.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
We do. On the consent calendar, we noted that items six point one through six point seven were inadvertently left out of the, inadvertently left out of the agenda packet. So we would like to continue those to the next meeting.
Okay, so we will, when we get to the consent calendar, we'll be considering six point eight only. Is there any other corrections or additions? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and move on then to item number three, which is community announcements. Steph?
I don't have many announcements. One that I would like to share, and then I'm gonna call on Hector for one. I'd like to introduce Gaoying Nagoa, the city engineer, public works administrator. Please stand. We can see you.
We're really excited.
Gaoying started work on Monday, and we've been spending the last few days moving files from my office to her office. That means she's taking on a number of new projects and she's been doing a lot, she did a lot of research ahead of arriving here, wanted to do diligence. So she's picking it up fast. And I think today she went out and did her first public works facility inspection for the city of Talent. So she's getting right in. So happy to have her. She will be the principal liaison, or staff support liaison for the Parks and Recreation Commission. And she's going to be attending Urban Forest Committee meetings. And one other commission. I can't remember which one.
Oh, traffic? Traffic safety?
Traffic safety, right. And as a part of that announcement, I see Jen Stuckus here. Jen's gonna be organizing the first traffic, safety and transportation commission meeting in about four years. And so we're putting the agenda together for that. We constitute it that.
Do we need any more commission members for that? Okay, I have someone who'd like to join if a need is.
Okay.
arises.
There are other openings, just in case.
Yeah.
This is the only one they're interested in.
Get hold of Hector. Get hold of Hector, he can provide guidance on that. And with that, I'm gonna ask Hector to provide an announcement on the election.
Election packets are now available. We had a flood of applicants this afternoon. Today is June fifth, so it is the first day we can distribute the packets. And they are available through the city recorder, who's also the city elections officer. The packet itself is not available on the website, although the instructions on how to become a candidate are. The packet will be delivered to prospective candidates via an in-person meeting with the city reporter, elections official. So we welcome anyone who would like to participate. Seats two, four, and six are up for election this year with the swearing in of new elect, elect, new candidates on June first. Now, one more announcement. Oh, July, January first. Yeah, yeah, to wait six months to be a counselor. Fire season, the first day of fire season was June first on Saturday. So we are in fire season now and the level is moderate. That's it for me.
Any other community announcements? All right. Next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Any speaker request forms?
No online speaker request forms, although we do have three members of the audience.
And none have been submitted to your email?
Correct. None were submitted prior to this, starting the meeting at six forty-five.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is department reports. Steph?
Department reports are primarily now included in the weekly report the council receives. The major report I wanted to mention again is that the focus of the public works department right now is on fixing the water leaks. We've had quite a spurt of them. Spurt, probably. In the last couple of weeks. Putting in some new water services and dealing with the amazing bloom of weeds that we're experiencing all over town. So we're trying to catch up. Wanting the people to know that yep, we appreciate those folks who have sent in their pictures of the weeds. And it's a good reminder of where some of those places are. There are a lot of places in town that you wouldn't think would be the city's responsibility. Little vacant islands and back alleys and places. So there's a lot more out there than immediately meets the eye. But it meets the eye of folks whose property backs up to the city rights of way or alleys or little nondescript pieces of land where the weeds are taken over. We're, we're on it. Keep us informed. It, it, it's always useful to have another set of eyes reminding us about where these places are. We want the community to be fire safe. We wanna do our part and urge the public also do their part on private property. We're getting there.
Commissioner, excuse me, Councilor Coley?
Is there an appropriate contact avenue to contact the public works department? Or about leaks or weeds or?
Sure, the main, the main telephone line, City Hall, goes to the two people at the front counter. Usually there's someone there to take the call. If not, they can leave a message at the main, on the main line. They're the ones who forward the information out to the public board.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I did that, one more thing, must you?
Councilor Coley?
I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more to the potential, maybe just the overall situation on what's gone on at the Camelot Theater regarding the potential illegal tree removal and tree topping situation? And then the potential enforcement actions that are gonna happen there? And maybe give an overview to the council of what's going on there?
Staff's aware of it. We received a couple of complaints from citizens about the tree topping that has taken place both on the public property adjacent to the Camelot Theater and on the Camelot Theater property. City attorney's been in contact with the executive director at the theater, has had some correspondence with him. There is a letter that is going out to the theater owner on that case. I'd rather not get into the details of the case, but that action has been taken this week to get the ball home.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I just have a quick one. I, I believe I heard you say that we were gonna get a report on the OWEB grant. Is that on the twentieth?
Yes.
The nineteenth?
Will be the twentieth, if you move the meeting. Yeah.
Do I have the meeting date right?
Pardon me, Mayor, I think I have it wrong, but it was, it would be the third meeting, or the third Wednesday of the month, or the second meeting.
Of June? Yeah, okay, great. So I know that there's been some folks interested in that, so I'm gonna just make sure we have the date right for the record. Oh, you have it right, it's the nineteenth. Thank you.
Well, the council meeting scheduled for the nineteenth. But there's an item on your agenda tonight to change the meeting date to the twentieth.
Oh, okay, yeah. That would explain why I've heard a couple of different dates. There we go. Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Again, for the record, we're considering item six point eight only. And which is the approval of the April twenty twenty-four financial packet. Is there any questions or comments about the consent calendar? Hearing none, all entertain a motion. Councilor Byers?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I do wanna make a quick comment about the minutes. I, because there was some concern about minutes being delayed. For the record, I just wanna mention that the minutes are actually completed. They just were inadvertently not added to the packet. And for that reason, we're choosing to postpone the matter till the next meeting, but they are completed. And thank you for the work that was applied from your office, Hector. We appreciate that. All right, item number seven point one is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine eight five dash oh on elector eligibility for general election. Staff report?
Yeah, this was a team effort of myself and city attorney and the city recorder. After the last meeting, we met to, as a staff, to talk about how we're going to implement the desire of the council to have former talent residents who are displaced by the Alameda fire and had planned to return to be eligible to seek elections in the city council this November. So we talked about it at the staff level in connection with how to prepare the council candidate packets, how to advise prospective candidates. Took a look at the city charter, the municipal code conferred with the county elections office, conferred with Secretary of State's office. Took a look at the, basically the four concerns that are articulated on page two of the staff report. One being that the action taken in twenty twenty, twenty twenty to allow non-resident candidates was taken during the period when there was a broader local state of emergency or state declaration, in fact. And that the state of emergency declaration has now been narrowed to apply only to land use issues. Secondly, that pursuant to the criteria in the May fifteenth motion, if a person qualifies as an elector for the purpose of a candidate for office, can someone claiming to meet the same criteria qualify as an elector for the purpose of signing a candidate's nomination petition? As well as the, for the purpose of voting? And if that's the case, could someone be, come an elected official for the city without having significant involvement in its affairs? And then, third, we noted that the November ballot is a shared ballot. So when you receive your ballot for city council, it's not the only thing on your ballot. You'd be voting for other offices, including the office of president. So how would we separate those matters in a shared ballot? People could vote, if, if we define as an elector as someone who resided in the community before the fire, but doesn't reside there now? And then who determines whether the potential candidate is qualified as an elector after applying factors that would determine their qualifications? That they are a qualifications elector? This is one that the city attorney did the most research on. And found that really the, in the final analysis, the elections officer of the city is the council. So the council would make that ultimate determination. So we've crafted an ordinance that, that addresses these issues for your consideration this evening. And we recommend that you act on that ordinance tonight as an emergency item so that it becomes effective immediately. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dave to describe the ordinance.
Well, I'd like to begin with a, a couple of sort of background comments. Under our, under our charter, we need to specify in an ordinance of how we wanna handle this situation of people who are displaced in the, from the city and but still consider themselves residents. So we passed a motion at the last meeting, but it needs to be an ordinance now. That's why we're giving it an ordinance. Secondly, it makes, especially since that our declaration of the state of emergency has been narrowed. We need to make this ordinance, if we're gonna pass it, apply basically to anybody who's displaced, not just to somebody displaced by the Alameda fire. And third, we need to, to make clear that one of the requirements for being a candidate for submitting your nomination petition is that you must be registered to vote in, in Talent. And that's a requirement of our charter. Now, the state has qualifications that the county then enforces. We can't be more lenient than the state is, but we can be stricter if we want it to be. So what this ordinance proposes to do is to make it clear that somebody who is submitting a nomination for petition has to also submit a certification document that says, first of all, I am a voter in the city of Talent. If they have, for whatever reason, temporarily moved someplace else, but registered to vote in that someplace else, they can't, can't be a candidate here. And that's, as I say, clear under our charter. And then it proposes that the council consider a series of factors. And we would get at those factors by supplying with the nomination petition a certification document. They don't have to use that certification document, but they have to somehow have to cert- certify that they are intending to return to the city of, of Talent as a resident. And the factors included in that certification are basically the same as the factors that the state requires for residency in state. And I have a, a, an early draft of the certification questions to be asked. And I'm not sure I have enough for everybody. I think I have five. And Hector and I are gonna work on getting this put together so it can go out to the people who have said they wanna be candidates. And they can submit a certification form like this along with that nomination petition that they require to submit in order to become a candidate. Think, I think that pretty well summarizes, well, I guess that we, we have a, an ordinance already that dis, that, in which the council has laid out what you have to do to become a nominee. Or to become a candidate. And you submit a nomination petition. And what we're proposing is to simply add a provision to that ordinance that says a permanent, a person who has temporarily left the person's previous place of residence in the city of Talent may be nominated for elective office in the city to be filled in an upcoming election, provided, one, the person is registered to vote in Jackson County as a city of Talent Oregon voter. Two, submits with the person's nomination petition a certification with intent to resume habitation in the city as soon as reasonably possible. And three, the city council formally approves the aforesaid certification. On that point, the council is, according to our charter, the, the elections official. It's very much like the situation that occurred here a couple of years ago in the columnist Nick Kristoff wanted to run for governor. And he submitted his nomination petition to the Secretary of State and listed all the reasons he, he thought he qualified as a resident of the state. And the Secretary of State, acting as the election official, said, no, I don't think he qualifies. That then got appealed to the Court of Appeals. And the Court of Appeals said the election official exercised the discretion that she was given under law to make that determination. And there's nothing that indicated that determination was made inappropriately. Therefore, her decision stands. Similar with the, the, the city council. If you end up with someone who has moved away, but considers himself still a resident of Talent and intends to resume residency in Talent, the council, as long as they first meet that qualification of being a, the talent voter, then they submit their certification saying, these are the reasons that it's appropriate to consider me a resident for purposes of this election. Then the council gets to make the decision whether, just like the Secretary of State did in the Kristoff case, the council gets to make the decision whether they have met those requirements. Actually, I should phrase it, they're not requirements, they're factors to be considered in making the decision. So there may be occasions when the council has a, an application, certification to look at and say, yeah, we agree? Or, or we don't think they've made their case. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Panemirov and then Councilor Coley?
Okay, yeah, I have a number of questions, but I'll just, I'll just start with the first one. So this additional form that people, is that to apply to all candidates?
No, that would only apply to somebody who has moved away.
Okay, who isn't, who isn't actually residing in the city, but is registered to vote in the city?
Exactly. So most candidates obviously would not have to deal with this at all.
Councilor Coley?
Yeah, how does one become registered to vote in a city that they don't live in?
Councilor Panemirov?
Well, I'll just answer your question. So that, for example, I was registered to vote in Talent. My house burned down. I could leave and there was special, it was a special emergency situation. I stayed registered to vote in Talent even though I was living, physically living in Ashland.
Because yeah, from my understanding, once you register, you don't have to renew your voter registration.
No, no.
So it only, it would only change if you chose to make a change?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I'll, and I'll just add that my understanding is that people who are houseless also are allowed to register to vote at a certain location, even though they don't have a domicile there.
That makes sense.
Or like a nonprofit or something like that.
Right.
Any other questions? Councilor Panemirov?
Yeah, so it sounds like you put a lot of work and thought into this. Dave, I really appreciate that. Of the areas of concern, I'm most persuaded by the first one. It was a different time and, and I didn't realize, actually, because I think I've been the one pushing this, that, you know, the, the emergency declaration situation has changed. Since then, it will be going on for years. And so my question to you is, you're, the staff is recommending approval of this ordinance in order to, to meet the, the motion that was made. If you had your druthers, would you rather, would it be easier on staff and everybody just to revisit that motion?
You mean to change, change direction entirely?
To change direction entirely? I'm, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm wondering whether it's, it's worth all this trouble. It sounds like it's a lot of work.
Oh, well.
Especially there was nobody, you know, in, in past elections. I mean, except for me.
Right. Yeah, the, the chances are that there are not gonna be very many people who try to take advantage of this. And it is a lot of trouble to try to pass an ordinance that does, but, but most of the trouble has been gone to already. So I'm not sure that that's a factor. But it is a quite legitimate question, I believe, whether this is a significant enough concern that you do need to change all of this.
Councilor Prestizo and then Gary?
I'm kinda struggling with the same thing. I mean, it kinda made sense right after the fire, but, you know, the state of emergency is essentially over. And, you know, I, I mean, it's been four years. I don't know if there's any sort of rule of thumb as how long it takes people to get back, but it seems like that's been a fairly long time now. So I'm really wondering if it's worth the trouble to go through all this? And it seems like it could be potentially opening up some cans of worms along the way. Because it seems like it's hard to make this a very clear cut thing. The very fact that people who wanna run are gonna need the discretion of the council to be accepted as a legitimate candidate or not seems a little asking for trouble.
Well, to support your point, cans of worm do seem to appear.
And, and is, are other cities doing anything like this?
I have no idea. I've not had time to research that.
Yeah.
The, the, I guess the other point is, if you, you do have to think about the possibility of somebody qualifying under this, perhaps because of being displaced by the Alameda fire, which was four years ago, they get elected, they're in office for four more years. So they're eight years away from the city.
Yeah, that was another part that they, not, not having a tendency to come back, but we don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, it's hard to know what any future outcome is going to be. So that was my other concerns. You know, they're in for four years and they may never move back to the city. So I'm, so I'm not really sure, other than, you know, trying to be supportive of people who lost their homes and are coming back and it's gonna take the time. It seems like that sort of window of concern may have closed.
So I'm gonna go to Gary and then Councilor Byers. Before I do though, I wanna state for the record that the emergency order is still in place. And so it hasn't gone away, just, just for the record. It's just more narrow than it was before. Yeah. And then also to state that, were, were you at the last meeting? I can't remember if you were, if you want. I just would say that if this were to happen, it's a motion of reconsideration for somebody who actually approved the motion.
Yeah, I don't remember voting.
Yeah, okay, so just, anybody can deliberate, anybody can speak to it, but it would require a motion of reconsideration. Okay, Gary and then Councilor Byers?
Well, I, in answering your question, Eleanor, I think this week, I, I think we have a solution to actually implementing what the council's direction was. Implementing what the council's direction was last time, so we would come to that point where. We we have a solution that enables it to occur. Yes, it adds more administrative issues, creating a new form, collecting the form. Trying to explain the policy to potential candidates. So, yeah, there's additional work there. And it, quite frankly, might lead to some discomfort down the road in that. If the ultimate determination on a candidate's eligibility. Comes to a city council. Where three members of that city council are going for office. The same office that that candidate has filed, has filed for. Might be uncomfortable.
Counselor Byers and then Counselor Colay.
Thank you for saying that, Gary, that was definitely a thought in my mind, as as are the points that Counselor Panomarif and Counselor Prestizo brought up. Not that this is, this is more a noting than a. A question. I will say that we are four years after the fire, there are still lots of people who have not returned. And I mean, we're looking at a system that isn't designed to support the inequity of recovery. And so while it makes 100% sense to me to choose the. The direction that is much, much more equitable in in one manner, as you are pointing out, Gary. I do want to point out that in another way, this is, if nothing else, shifting the policy to be more equitable in other ways. Even if it isn't taken advantage of this time. And I'm just pointing that out, that's just a statement for the record.
Counselor Colay?
Yeah, one question I had was, you had mentioned that. This ordinance would also mean that it's open to anyone who has been displaced, not just from the Alameda fire. So I'm wondering what, that seems like a can of worms to me, what that means and how that would be determined, what is. What is displaced defined as, would that just be up to the discretion of the council, that could be another sticky situation, you know, some of these displaced because. Their rent was too much, so they had to move somewhere else, but they really want to live in talent. What are we going to do there?
Counselor Panomarif?
Yeah, I'll also say this ordinance doesn't appear to have kind of an end date. Whereas when we originally did this, there was an end date that kind of moved out, but there was one. Also, I'll just say, so I don't forget, if if we were to consider this ordinance, the number of days. Isn't right. The number of days I had no earlier than 110, no later than 75. It's 153 days from June 5th to November 5th. Not 110, 110 would put you in July 18th or something like that. And I love calendar math, so. So those are just like nits on the ordinance, but I'm I'm kind of feeling like maybe we should reconsider and move away. And I'll make a motion if if that's interesting.
I just would say that I think originally my. My concerns were such that I I leaned towards not really supporting the motion in the first place. Just because I just, for no other reason really that I thought. There wasn't any really. The return on investment wasn't there is is my best way of putting it. But what I didn't consider was the. That the comments that Counsel Byers just made and I do appreciate the idea that. It's, it it states equity. In light of the fact that most of the work for this ordinance has already been done, the research has all been done. And that there is a solution. I, if the vote were to split, I would support this this ordinance. Counselor Perry Miller?
I'm thinking similarly that since so much of this work has already been done. And. That so many of these questions that we have would be answered within this certification document. And I have no concerns that our members of council who will be running again wouldn't be able to be. Fair and impartial in their decisions, I kind of am leaning towards supporting this. Especially if staff feels. Comfortable with, you know, the legality of this ordinance. But those are just my my thoughts at this point.
Counselor Prestizo?
I guess one of my concerns about that is, you know, there's this council, but this. If I understand it right, will sort of be continuing on and on and there will be other counselors. Who will be potentially, you know, reviewing and making decisions and people who may be running against them and so. But I have a lot of faith in the integrity of this council. I mean, who knows what the future is going to hold, like, you know, if I were able to vote on this, I would probably vote against.
Is there a a a potential for an amendment to amend an end date on this or to tie it to the current emergency order?
Yes, a sunset. You could put a sunset on it. And in fact, there's, in in the attachments, there's that previous 2020. Ordinance that does have the sunset date on it, you could put a date on it or or make it a. Last until the current state of emergency is withdrawn.
All right, sounds, any other questions or comments? Counselor Perry Miller?
Just the only other edit, I guess, that I would not want us to forget is the calendar days that member. Or Counselor Panomarif mentioned, and I don't know, I did not do that math.
Well, if I can respond to that, that that's in the existing ordinance.
I know.
And it really. It's just saying, here's the window you have to meet. It doesn't have to be tied to any particular date of of the election. It's just saying, within that window, you have to get in.
Counselor Panomarif?
But doesn't it have to be tied to the actual window the city of talent is offering people to apply?
Right, it has to be. Filed with recorder not earlier than 110 days before the election and not later than 75.
So it'd be kind of discriminating against, so if you're doing it for this reason, you can't, you can't. Apply until mid-July, but everybody else gets in there today, but I don't know, it just seems inconsistent.
Well, if you if you want to amend that current language, you can do that too, of course.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Would it be better to put dates rather than number of days?
I think the dates change every year, don't they?
But it's just this year, right?
If you amend it that way.
Doesn't our emergency order expire in January?
Yes.
The the emergency order expires when the city manager. Withdraws it or the or the council. Ends it, either either one, but it's not, there's no particular end date.
I think it's the contract that expires, yeah, that's right.
Sorry.
It's the contract that expires. That's right. Counselor Prestizo?
I I need help understanding, could you explain more about the the different equities you're talking about?
Sure, so I, to Gary's point of someone coming before the council and us determining their. Fitness to even put themselves before the populace to elect them is. One level of assessment that does not have to be there and shouldn't necessarily bar someone from entering an election. And yet this other equity over here is the fact that. There are, you know, still over 100 people, I think over 200, if my math is correct and my memory serves me correctly, that. Have yet to return due to inequities in a number of layers of system from FEMA assistance to housing assistance to. Ability to have their home insured, to being able to access the tools they need to advocate for additional support. And many of those people are still trying to return as well, even though. They started so much further behind the recovery starting line than other people did. And so that's another form of inequity. And they're trying to get back to their community as well. And I would say, who are we to say to them that they also are not fit to serve their community?
There's, to to that point, there's still, as I understand it, over 100 hotel rooms in use as transitional temporary housing. Waiting for settlement. Counselor Panomarif?
Yeah, I'm wondering, as a practical matter, we know in the last few elections, there was nobody that took advantage. Of this either for committees or commissions, I mean, except me. And or for council, so I'm wondering, has the city received any interest from folks who have been displaced?
Council currently know that we have not, and the committees and commissions several make allocations for members who who live outside of talent. Together for talent.
That's true.
Are you raising your hand? Okay, Counselor Panomarif?
Yeah, so it just seems, I, you know, I mean, I think our heart is in the right place. And I really appreciate Counselor Byers' comments on 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 equity and all of that, but as a practical matter, I don't know that this is something that really. Serves. In a practical way, equity in our community. And it could potentially lead to some strange situations. I'm I'm sorry that Steph has already spent a great deal of time on this. And while I appreciate the very well crafted solution, I'm just wondering that as a practical matter, maybe we should just reconsider. And I'm prepared to make a motion to reconsider just to see how people, and if we split, we split. But I think we would have to do one or the other because we don't want to have that motion in place and not have the ordinance, so.
That's right, I'm going to take some more comments, Counselor Perry Miller and then Counselor Byers.
Mine was just a process question about that, I didn't, so are you saying? That because we asked for this ordinance, we need to deal with it, we can't just move on with our lives?
Although, did we ask for it, I believe?
I'm going to let staff answer that question.
Well, we have a council direction that was virtually unanimous, as I recall. Giving us direction, so I think if you want to change direction. You know, we can't, problem is we can't implement. What you approved before, this is the method of implementation. So I suppose if you don't. Implement, if you don't approve the method of implementation, it just won't work.
I would say, as a matter of housekeeping, I would. Look for a decision one way or the other as presiding officer, so. Just just so that we can dispose of it or pass it. Counselor Byers?
Oh, I just want to say that there are so many opportunities for us as a council to examine equitable practices, this is just one. And I did want to state for the record that this is an opportunity, but I also am very cognizant and appreciative of the issues that also might arise.
All right, Counselor Prestizo?
Quickly, I I mean, the staff did do a lot of work, but to me, that helped crystallize. The decision that we're making, at least for me.
Agreed.
Helped me understand better sort of the ins and outs and potential consequences of it, so I don't think it was time ill spent.
Thank you.
We're not those disappointed.
And to add to that, I mean, it really demonstrated the team's ability to. Find solutions, really appreciate that.
Yeah.
It can be done.
Yep. Yes. Counselor Panomarif?
I have a motion if you're, okay, I move to reconsider the council decision of May 15th, 2024. Approving a motion to allow talent residents who were displaced in the Alameda fire. Continue to reside outside the city limits, but also ultimately plan to return talent to seek election, the city council. In November 2024, and I'm just reading off the background of the on page, sorry.
Go ahead, just tell me the page.
Seventeen.
Thanks. Sorry, 14.
Yeah.
So it's in the background of the staff report.
Yep, got it. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second to reconsider the. Decision. Of May 15th regarding. The electability of displaced residents from the Alameda fire. Is there any further, do you want me to read the whole thing?
No, no.
Okay.
We may have to read the whole ordinance.
Yeah, is there any further discussion, Counselor Panomarif?
Yeah, I I just want to say for the the record, this is, if this motion fails. You know, I will vote yes on the ordinance so so that staff can implement what the council wants. But just as a practical matter, I think that based on what we know now. The the most sensible thing is to is to actually. Step away from this direction and continue to focus our efforts elsewhere.
Any other deliberation, Counselor Perry Miller?
I just want to say that I will be voting yes on this and I just appreciate this conversation about equity and this election and all the different ways that. We can continue, you know, reaching out to all the members in our community and also thank you, Counselor Byers, for your comments.
Great comments. Counselor Panomarif?
And just to clarify, my understanding is that the reconsideration essentially undoes the motion, so voting yes means, yes, I want to undo the motion. Not that I wanted the original motion.
Thank you for that clarification.
I I was starting to wonder which way I was going to vote.
It's one of those double negative things. All right, any other deliberation, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, everybody. All right, the next item on the agenda is 7.2, which is review of the lease rates for city of, thank you, staff, for the great work that you did on that. And again, for your creativity and ability to find find solutions, it's really impressive. 7.2 is review of lease rates for city of talent and urban renewal agency properties, staff report?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm actually going to break this into two items. The first item being the. Related to potential motion number one, which would direct the staff to return. With a resolution establishing a standard lease rate for city owned property. Used by nonprofit organizations for office purposes. At 75% of the market rate as determined by a survey of comparable space rentals conducted every two years. Effective July 1st, 2024, and that that rate shall be $1.10 per square foot. Per month, the the bulk of the staff report deals with that item. This would also be on the next Tura agenda, as one of those buildings is owned by Tura.
So so you're breaking, so what what would be the second item?
Second item would be the rates for the community center. The third item would be. Return retaining the current practice for non office space leases. Which will be to negotiate those rates based upon. Other factors than the market.
Okay, so before the discussion starts, I just want to say on item number one. I have a potential conflict of interest or an actual conflict, it's, yeah, I have an actual conflict of interest. We did reach out to O G E C today. And as an employee of MISA, who is an, who is a occupant of one of the. Um, and as an employee of MISA, who is an, who is a occupant of one of the offices co-located with TBA, Talent Business Alliance, um, and as an employee, as a paid employee, uh, for me, so I would have an actual conflict of interest. So I'll be handing the gavel over to Counsel Byers. Counsel Perry Miller, or actually, yeah, Counsel Byers, it's all yours.
Counsel Perry Miller, thank you. Um, so as the mayor said, um, I also need to declare a, an actual conflict of interest because I am an employee of the Talent Business Alliance, which, as the mayor said, rents office space from the City of Talent. Um, so as far as this item goes, I will need to recuse myself. And the Oregon Government Ethics Commission did say that, if you need to recuse with an actual conflict, um, that means no discussion, no deliberation, and no voting. Um, but I will just note that Susan mentioned to me that it is appropriate to remain on the dais, which I was surprised about. I asked her about that because that hasn't been our practice in the past. So if council wishes to dismiss me to the back of the room, I will. But otherwise, I'm perfectly happy to just sit here because I would like to hear the discussion. Any discussion on requesting, uh, both the mayor and Counsel Perry Miller to step down from the dais? Counsel Panama?
I'm, I'm fine with them staying.
All right, I think we can proceed.
Ready? Okay, this item originated, uh, when the council was discussing a, uh, renewal of the current agreement with the, uh, Jackson County Community Long Term Recovery Group in relationship for its lease of the upstairs office space, uh, above the Talent Depot. Uh, the council referred this matter back to the staff for reports and analysis of lease rates on city and Tura properties. So what we did is we, uh, while we had done a, uh, while we had conferred with a local realtor and someone who leases a lot of space, uh, in town, uh, we also did some survey work, uh, primarily utilizing the internet uh, of office space in the Ashland and Talent area. Uh, and provided you with information in the staff report, uh, that the lease rates in that Ashland area, there were no comps in talent, ranged from eighty-five cents to two dollars and fifty-eight cents per square foot per month, with a medium range of a dollar thirty-seven to a dollar fifty. Now, so the average of the one thirty-seven, one fifty would be a dollar forty-five. Uh, and seventy-five percent of that, which we're recommending as the nonprofit rate, uh, would be a dollar ten. We also contacted other cities through the city manager listserv and found that there was no common practice for setting lease rates or establishing nonprofit rates. And no city has established a uniform rate for all properties. Uh, lease rates for nonprofits range from zero to the market rate. Uh, the, a typical response from the listserv was shown here as the city rents space for a food pantry and an after-school program. Both are nonprofits. The rent is five dollars, uh, five hundred dollars a year, a random amount, not based on any metric. Uh, they just pay for gas, electricity, water, and sewer. A lot of the responses were just like that. That depends on the community, the activity that the space is being used for, the support, uh, and just, you know, kind of unique to each community. Uh, some cities determined the lease rate, mainly larger cities, uh, on the appraised value or realtor opinion of the value of the property. And some had set that at, uh, calculating the rent at one percent of the value per month. Uh, but most others gathering what comparables they could to establish a market rate. So we looked at the, what other cities are doing, uh, on discounting, discounting it for nonprofits. Again, it's all over the place. Uh, right now, the community center discounts the rate to nonprofits uh, at forty-four, forty-four percent of the commercial rate. Uh, and we're also, uh, another part of this deals with the community center rates. So we looked at what the JCC LRTG is currently paying. We also looked at the amount that they're using in their documents as an in-kind contribution by the city uh, of, uh, nine sixty-nine ninety-four a month. Uh, that's the value that they have placed on that space uh, as a part of, uh, their applications for funding and cost sharing. So that's, uh, you know, we looked at that in terms of, well, what's one percent, one percent of that? That doesn't quite get us to a reasonable number. So we, uh, the staff has come to a recommendation that, uh, you sta, you do establish a uniform lease rate for the three buildings that are utilized for office purposes, that those being the Talent Depot upstairs, one oh two Home Street, uh, and Town Hall, and that the rate for all of those be uniformly set at, um, a dollar ten per square foot per month. That would substantially raise the rent for the Talent Depot and and one or two Home Street, they're currently both paying a dollar. Uh, uh, and it would be close to the same for the TBA leaseout space uh, to where they are now. So. So that would be motion number one. It's to going forward as these leases become available, as they come up for renewal, that you apply a, a uniform rate for the office space based upon square footage. And the first of those that would be coming up uh, is, uh, uh, JCC LTRG. Uh, and that would be effective July first.
Counsel Panamarev? So, and I just apologize, I'm having a little trouble hearing, so you may have said this. No, it's not you, it's this room, and maybe I need hearing aids. Um, but what I'm understanding from the report is there is a distinction in staff's mind between a, a nonprofit using office space. Um, so that would be LTRG, Rogue Action, TBA, versus using the space for other activities like access and the historical society. And that's essentially motion one and motion three.
Yeah.
They're seen separately.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I like, I, I, I can kind of follow that philosophy. Thank you.
Counsel Colley?
If that rate were to be set, would there be any opportunity for negotiation from the tenants or that would be what it is?
They could certainly propose a different amount. Uh, I think both of these tenants in discussions with them expect this to change, uh, dramatically.
Counsel Panama? So to clarify, so certainly, we know, uh, we've been talking to LTRG. Um, you've been talking to the Rogue Action Center?
Yes.
Okay, and that, but that's a Tura decision, that's gonna be separate.
That's a Tura discussion, and their lease isn't up yet.
Okay, and, and TBA. Um, did you also talk to the Historical Society and Access, or did you feel? We keep thinking this. Okay.
They're, uh, the access agreement is new, and of course, they're not using the facility at the moment. And then I think the Historical Society's agreement has some time to run.
Presiding officer, uh, just to respond to Counsel Colley's comment, I, I think the notion that the council was pushing towards was to establish something that didn't require negotiation and, and rethinking by the council every time the lease came up. Said something that was firm, so everybody knew what the expectations were from the get-go.
Counsel Colley?
Would, I guess it depends on the terms of each lease as they come up, but would this rate increase at some percentage based on the market over time when their leases came up for the second time? Would we have to do this process again where you go out and do a market analysis? What would, what would be the future plans of this as it goes forward?
Depends on the term of the, of, of the lease, whether it be a year or multiple years. Uh, we could, uh, put a cola escalator, uh, in the agreement, which is pretty common. Those kinds of terms, I think, would affect, would be negotiable. And, and we take a look at, uh, i- if we signed an agreement with uh, nonprofit X for two years, it would remain in effect for the two years, or we could add a cola es- escalator to it. So that, I think that's, that is a part of the negotiation. If it's for five years, we might take a look at that different.
Counsel Prestes?
So then at the end of the two-year lease, then would, before you sign the new lease, would then you do a
Yeah.
assessment of
Right. We would anticipate that you'd have a new rate, a new uniform rate every two years.
Forgive me, I should have asked this ahead of time. Since I'm a presiding officer for this discussion and can't vote, do we have a quorum to make a decision on this?
Yes.
Excellent, great.
When, when, when there is, um, a declaration and recusal, the, even though a counselor is not participating, they count towards the court.
Great, thank you. Um, any other questions or discussion? I would entertain, um, a first motion. Counsel Panama?
I move to direct staff to return to the city council with a resolution establishing a standard lease rate for city-owned property used by nonprofit organizations for office purposes at seventy-five cents of the mark, seventy-five percent of the market rate as determined by a survey of comparable space rentals conducted every two years, effective July first, twenty twenty four, said rate shall be one dollar ten per square foot per month.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to direct staff to return to the city council with a resolution seeking to establish a standard lease rate for city-owned property used by nonprofit organizations for office purposes at seventy-five percent of the market rate as determined by a survey of comparable space rentals conducted every two years, effective July first, twenty twenty four. Said rate shall be one dollar and ten cents per square foot per month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, I would entertain a second motion.
Question?
Yes, Counsel.
Um, so are we still, are they still recusing for the second motion? Or was it just the first motion?
I am not recusing for the second motion.
Okay.
We haven't discussed the second.
Okay.
But I, I'm wondering if
I'm joking.
The mayor's gonna be presiding again.
Okay, great.
So now we go to item number two, which is the community center fees, and I think we go back to having the mayor preside. Yeah, we go back to having the mayor preside. All right, so this part, um,
But if you want to say that, uh, I, I am at this time declaring that I, uh, work for my going to the public, for the nonprofit, for our community. And there might be a time when we might rent, um, community center, but we've never done that. Um, and for that, I'm gonna declare a potential conflict of interest, and exercise my objectivity and my right to, uh, to deliberate and drive. Counsel Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um, I also work for a nonprofit that has in the past and probably will in the future rent space at the Talent Community Center, so I am also declaring a potential conflict. Um, I will, um, plan to participate and vote on this.
Okay, go. Okay, so on this one, uh, this is something that, uh, the finance department's been working on for a while. And that has been a, taking a look at, uh, the community center fees. We noted that the current fee schedule was adopted in twenty sixteen. Uh, the construction of the community center was largely funded through grant funding. Uh, the maintenance of the facility, which is now running about forty-five thousand dollars annually. And that does not include painting or major maintenance. Is funded through the general fund, and the user fees accruing to that fund from the use of the building, uh, are about eleven thousand annually. So we're, uh, utilizing, uh, about thirty, thirty-four thousand in general fund revenue to, uh, uh, do the upkeep of the building. Based upon the survey, uh, collected by the staff, the hourly rental fee for the conference room, dining room, and kitchen would increase substantially. Uh, for example, the user fee for a nonprofit using a single conference room would increase from twenty dollars an hour to fifty dollars an hour. The nonprofit rate would be sixty percent of the commercial rate. Uh, so we have prepared for you the survey data that was gathered by, uh, the staff. Uh, and we prepared, uh, if you approve them, the, uh, new community center fee schedule. Uh, and if you, uh, uh, choose to go with this new fee schedule, the motion would be to direct staff to return to the city council with a resolution establishing the updated Talent Community Center fee schedule as recommended by staff with fees to be updated annually in accordance with the cost of living.
It was, it was just, I couldn't hear. Did you say thirty-five thousand or three-two-five thousand to, uh, keep, to maintain the, this community center?
Forty-five thousand annually.
Forty-five thousand annually? Okay, thank you.
Just for this building?
Yes. That's the estimate for this, for those building and the, and the adjacent grounds.
Thank you. Uh, that was also, my question was just, like, could you speak a little bit to what, what that number covers? As far as, like, I'm imagining, like, a little bit of staff time for scheduling and reserving the community center as well as, you know, maintenance around the property and cleaning inside, is that?
Sure, it's, uh, electricity, uh, water, uh, utility, you know, the utilities, uh, the, uh, 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 maintenance worker is here virtually every day, uh, particularly following any use of the building to clean restrooms, clean the floors. Uh, often needing to put equipment away. Do the out, outside, outside maintenance, uh, washes the windows, cleans the exterior of the building. All the normal maintenance things that you would do with the building. It does not include painting, uh, or repairs to the structure.
Insurance?
There's an allocation of the insurance, yeah.
Uh, thanks, Gary. So would this increase have the effect of just simply covering that amount so that we would be breaking even on this property?
I don't believe that, uh, I think, uh, I think the recommendation from the finance department I think the recommendation from the finance department for the, on the fee schedule was based upon comps, not doing an analysis of covering the cost of the operation of the facility.
The recommendation of what?
I, I don't believe their fee schedule was based upon what it would take to cost, what it would take to recover the cost of the maintenance of the facility, but was based on comparable facility, so not the community.
It's for that target. Where was that recommendation? Did you make that recommendation?
No. No.
Okay, I, I ask that for not, not to find out anything other than, if, uh, if it has a purpose in that, in this discussion that I'm looking at, you stand point of recovering the costs for the city, it might be the analysis of, to do. But the thing about doing that is, um, I, I used to need the the business of renting out conference space, and the thing about doing that, you also have to, um, you also have to calculate the, the volume, um, which can be very challenging, and, um, for, you know, projected volume that would, but I know that this is a discussion kind of in time to not, so, but, um, I just wonder if you should kind of
We should take a look at that.
Before.
We could take a look at that and come back.
Would that would that be the proper point?
I think it's worth taking a look at it. My, this quick mental math and guess is that if we were to price the community center hourly rate at a rate with which it would cover the annual cost of this building and potentially other maintenance, it might be cost prohibitive?
It would be if we projected that the same volume and didn't do anything to the build.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that's sort of the, that's maybe the concern, maybe the part of the cost, but also
And that's, I just wanted to say that's something I've been interested in a long time is understanding whether we're optimizing the use of this building just how, how much use are we getting out of it?
Counselor Byers?
I would also be curious about comparisons with spaces in Ashland, just because, one, I know that there is a real lack of rentable community space in Ashland, and I'm wondering, one, if we get overflow from there already, and two, if, uh, if we continue at a rate that supports increasing volume of use, if we might continue to pull more from Ashland, there's not going to be any more community gathering space there any time soon.
I'd also like to see in clarification, um, the amount of impact the city has using this space, and while I don't suggest we should be charging the city, I do think it should be weighed against the expense. It should offset the expense. Yeah, but I guess the only thing I might add at this point was just to say that this, uh, community center was a, was a, a grant, we got a grant, I know that it was a bit expensive, but I think most of it was paid for by a grant, it was, you know, an opportunity for the community to have to take, not have before, and the city wasn't allowed on visit for the first five years, so the intention was to clearly I just wonder if there's any room to look at, maybe, um, is there any property management that, that, that might be able to promote the space more, and, um, I'd pick the volume up so that we can offset the cost, and, and, I mean, I have, I, you know, volume is clearly the issue, um, without making it so expensive that it's no longer, the community can no longer get volume, you know, the tax is bringing and, um, so with volume being the issue, we either have to ask ourselves as a city, can we go into the business of promoting community space, which is a thing, uh, or can we, is there, is there a, a property manager that does that, management service that does that? Um, to try and, try and offer the financial, but I do, what happens, maybe the financial amount that we offset that the city uses from the expense?
Yeah.
Um, Counselor Pollock?
Yeah, the other thing to think about with increasing volume is that that maintenance cost will increase, maybe not as exponentially as the volume increase, but there will be more cleaning and more utilities and all that stuff, so that has to be thought about.
I think the objective is just trying to get this, uh, tip of the monkey off, coming back without, without moving this great asset.
And we can come back with some other thoughts. On, you know, some additional data, take a look at some other ways of addressing this. Uh, may, uh, any thoughts about, uh, considering a graduated increase in the fee rather than having it all in one year?
Yeah, I, I would like to that, because I don't think, and in this discussion, for clues, this council for making a decision of raising the rates at this time, uh, there's clearly some, I mean, I don't want, I, I don't want to imply that's going to be about that. Um, so I'll leave it, Counselor Perry, no.
Um, thank you. So Gary, do you mean, like, if, if in the future, after staff has some time to do some more analysis, if, if the increase is decided upon doing it in a more gradual way, rather than, so the community isn't like shocked by the
You know, if, if we come back and say again that the conclusion is that it's fifty dollars an hour, forty, whatever that it, amount is, rather than more than doubling the rate in one year, instead of going up, picking that up over a series of years, like you've done with the water rates, to get it up to the, uh, up to, up to the supportive rate.
Which is yet to be determined.
Do you have a question for Paul?
We'll bring back more options.
So do we want to enter in a motion tonight? Or anything? All right, what tomorrow? Thank you, Gary.
Okay, third item would be to retain the current practice of leasing non-office space to nonprofit organizations at a rate determined on a case-by-case basis. That's, that's something of policy decision, that you only have two buildings that are involved here. The, the, uh, the pantry at the town hall and the historical society building, and, um, we're basically unable to find some comparable rate for those. Uh, like, again, the once-a-week use by the pantry of the town hall for a few hours and basically providing that for free, it's kind of a community service decision. Uh, and it's similar to the historical society, that's, that's, uh, not a, not a business use, uh, that's more of a community amenity use. So those kinds of considerations, I think, uh, are worthy of continuing a, as the basis for your deciding how to rent those.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's totally reasonable, in my opinion, to do those on a case-by-case basis. It's only two properties, it's gonna be every few years, it's not really that much time and burden. Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I, I like the delineation between office space and, and also serving community, like you said. Um, I guess I have a question, do we really need a motion if it's just retaining the current pa- path, practice? Would, if you prefer a motion, that's
Will you prefer a motion?
No, I, I think I've got direction.
All right. Do we have direction? We have been sent, I
Counselor Perry, no.
Thank you, I agree with retaining the current practice.
Anybody object to it? All right, you have the sentence. Um, all right. Thank you, Gary, thank you, Dave.
Number one. One more, there's one more.
Yeah, one more, number four. So number four. Gary, number four, number nine.
Oh, number four, sorry, uh, would be to renew the lease agreement with Jackson County Community Long-Term Recovery Group for a period of one year, effective July first, twenty twenty-four, at a lease rate of a dollar ten per square foot per month.
So my question is, why do we need to make that motion?
Their lease expires on June thirtieth.
But our charter says that the city manager manages all of the public property supporting the community property. So just out of curiosity, what is the reason we need to do this? You have the rates, you have everything, why?
Okay, that, that's good clarification, the council's approved leases in the past, so I just, um,
But I think it's because of the past variable rates, which was the whole point of like setting that
Right, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so if it's understood that way, then that's fine. Like, oh.
No, that's been
Okay.
I think that's been the goal, right?
Why?
That's been the goal, right?
It's consistent with my goal to take administrative things off of your agenda.
This was just a test, Gary. We passed.
Which motion is not a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is one point one, which, excuse me, eight point one, which is a discussion on canceling July third. We think twenty twenty-four, regular council.
Okay, we have, uh, a council meeting scheduled for July third, day before July fourth. I guess in the past, you canceled that meeting. You need to take action to cancel it if you want to do so again.
Do you mean in the past, we canceled that meeting on the third? I don't remember, I was canceling on July, I remember the council in canceling August.
Mayor, my, my, my memory might, uh, alter me, but prior years, uh, council meetings that are either, uh, close to the fourth, the day before, the day after, have been canceled.
Okay. Probably. Um, and I don't think anybody, I know, I know all of you at which ones, well, I love to go there. Any discussion? I would give more.
I move the council, cancel the July third meeting.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to cancel the July third meeting, surrender discussion? Hearing none, I will favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number eight point two, proclamation declaring national pollinator leaving and considering of town. Steph?
This is a proclamation that has become an annual event for you to consider, and, uh, we don't really have any further comment on.
Any comments or questions, uh, Counselor Perry, no?
Um, this is wonderful, I'm remembering a time when perhaps uh, Jordan was our city manager, or it might have been Tom, but, um, I really like the practice of, uh, Medford puts their proclamations at the very beginning of the agenda, so that people who come can hear the proclaiming. Um, I don't know if we need to vote on that, but that's just something that I think is
Okay.
a nice practice that the city of Medford does, but.
We certainly do that. But that is also my experience throughout my career is to have ceremonial items at the beginning of the agenda.
What?
Ceremonial items at the beginning of the agenda.
And, and that has been proposed for the new council rules that we have been discussing, so I will include that for sure.
So do we want to read the proclamation at the next meeting, at the beginning of the next meeting? Is that what?
No, I just, for future proclamations as a practice.
So I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation that's dated today. Whereas pollinator species, such as thousands of species, are essential parameters contributing by with our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary to maintain healthy, diverse, urban, and suburban ecosystems. And whereas pollination plays a vital role for the treatment of our community in helping our quality of life and creating, uh, recreation as economic development, I'm figuring. I'm gonna stop for a second, inherently, I'm about to declare this week. Pollinating before I put into this declaration. Uh, Counselor Byers?
I move to declare this week pollinator week, second.
You have a motion and a second, it's part of this week pollinator week. Any discussion?
Well, isn't that actually the week of June seventeenth to the twenty-third?
Oh, yeah, I'm sharing that, the, the date on the proclamation.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, the date as specified.
Yeah, I amend my motion to declare the week of June seventeenth to the twenty-third as, uh, our city's observance of National Pollinator Week.
Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? From the, 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 sorry, I was working at the supermarket line. Um, so whereas for decades, the city of town has managed urban landscapes in the public lands that include many municipal parks and greenery, as well as wildlife habitats, and therefore, as a city, it's now provide recommendations to developers and residents, providing advanced thinking, promote wise, conservative, and stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their, uh, their habitat, of their habitats in urban, suburban environments. Now, therefore, I already bear the plan of the habit of the city, and hereby proclaim to the week of June seventeenth, June the twenty-third or twenty-four, as our city's observance of national pollinator and the city of town as an affiliate of East City USA, which is all residents who recognize its observance. That's fine, that's fair. Thank you, everybody. All right, the next item on the agenda is eight point three, discussion of the seventeen as a city pollinator. Steph?
Your question is, uh, the next city council meeting is scheduled for June nineteenth. Uh, that is, uh, now known widely as Juneteenth. So the question arose as to whether you wanted to move the council meeting to the twentieth.
Counselor Byers?
Seeing as it's a federally observed day and in celebration of something that I think it's quite important to observe, I would be very supportive of moving the meeting to the twentieth.
Counselor Panamara?
I agree with Counselor Byers.
If there's, uh, I'll get you plenty. Dave, do you want to?
I just want, this shouldn't affect the decision at all, but I know we were trying to get to working on the, uh, fin- finishing up the, uh, council rules, and we were thinking that we would address that at the second meeting in June. I didn't realize from looking at the agenda that we were talking about changing the council date, and I made plane reservations that I can now not get out of, uh, to head back east to visit my daughter. Uh, so I would not be able to participate in the, uh, study session on the, uh, on the council rules on, on the twentieth. That's not critical, um, but I just wanted you to know that.
Counselor Perry, no?
Uh, my calendar is telling me that we're supposed to have Tura that day as well before regular council meeting, but I don't know if we have enough to we have some things, but I don't know if we need to have any of them.
Yeah, I think, uh, we may have some business for that. I think we just have to, I think we just have to schedule it. For the, pardon?
What about the, so we can, our agenda and
That was my question.
Yeah. The two, they think, um, they go to go.
No, I want to get these rules over.
I'm.
Trying to get the council rules adopted so that we, so we can codify the changes in the House bill and all of that stuff and get that resolved. Councilor Byers?
I'm even more supportive of moving the meeting to the eighteenth.
Is that what, staff? Do you want to get back to it on it, or?
Uh, not that. I can make that work. We can make it, we can make that work. Well, here, here's, here's, here's the, here. I need to, I need to check with the finance director to see if she can have the budget ready. By the eighteen. Yeah, yeah, we also have to notice for a supplemental budget.
Uh, well, you can, um, say if they be determined and we can notify us right away so that we can notify the public right away. And if there's a way that we can get it on the website sooner rather than later, but we can announce tonight that we are going to change the date and I will be the point with. So, that's good to be done as we can for our public. Oh, is she here?
Right there, perfect timing. She's locked out, so we can't let her in.
Nice.
Just, I'm not gonna.
What they're talking about, we're talking, uh, just, we're talking about changing the date of the June nineteenth meeting. Uh, and we initially had talked about changing it to the twentieth. And they're now talking about changing it to the eighteenth. But, uh, the council meeting. Uh, but that's the date where we were planning to have the budget for adoption. So the concern I had was, how does that, how does changing that date to the eighteenth affect your timeline? Again. Okay. Okay, so the eighteenth would be okay? Okay, great. I'm glad you were watching. Yes.
And Dave will be there.
A double Dave night.
Yeah, it's a double Dave night. That sounds great, so all of our team.
I move to reschedule our, um, second council meeting of the month of June to June eighteenth.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to reschedule the second meeting of June to June eighteenth. Is there any further discussion?
I guess.
Councilor?
Do we, were we separately considering to declare Juneteenth as a city holiday? Does that matter in this, or are we just discussing moving our meeting? It's already a federal holiday.
It's already a federal holiday.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. So the next item on the?
Gary.
Gary?
Well, I'm, the next item.
Yeah, the next item on the agenda is other business and future agenda items. Gary?
Okay, the other scheduling item is a joint meeting with the planning commission on the buildable lands inventory. And we've been, uh, talking about various dates for that. Uh, the date that we're currently considering and would like you to consider is June twenty-fifth. Uh, we're, we're bringing that meeting up, that date up, because that is a regularly scheduled planning commission night. Uh, the consultant, we believe, the, the consultant can be here. We were, we were looking, we were looking at the twenty-sixth. But, uh, hopefully, planning commissioners have already scheduled themselves to be available on the twenty-fifth for their regular meeting, so I'm wondering if you're available on the twenty-fifth.
I'm not available.
How much is not available? Yeah, right?
Not available, no.
Not available. Are you available? Yeah, are you available?
June twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Um, I think so, I'm just checking down.
Fire, are you available? Perry, no? Alright, so we have a four, point? Right, one, two, three, well, nine.
Yeah.
You're available? Okay, so we have the four, okay, with fire.
Okay, so we'll, uh, pursue that and let you know right away to confirm that date.
Alright, anybody else have any other business or future agenda items? Next item on the agenda is for the communications, there are none, so we will adjourn this meeting at eight point four.